Good evening, everyone. By my computer, it is seven o'clock. However, by my count, we have three trustees here. So I think we'll be holding on a little bit longer before we kick this meeting off. So we'll give everyone mountain time to dial in. Actually, an important thing to ask Macy. Are we expecting a full house tonight? Or are there going to be some missing trustees?
Everyone except for Mayor Pro Tem Baumhofer.
Okay, great, thank you.
Excuse me, and Trustee Act will also be absent tonight.
Oh, okay, I was, he was the one I was looking for because I believe, I say Eric, Julie, and Lindsay. I believe in that case, we have everyone in attendance. So, welcome, everyone. It is 7:01 PM on Tuesday, February 1st, 2022. And we will call to order this meeting of the Netherlands Board of Trustees. Macy, if you would please call the roll.
Mayor Larson.
Here.
Trustee Taylor.
Here.
Trustee Kimsus Smile.
Here.
Trustee Danforth.
Here.
And Trustee Corvillan.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Macy. We have five items on the consent agenda this evening. The minutes, the warrants, and revised bylaws for Pro-SAB Planning Commission and Sustainability Advisory Board. Any trustees have questions or comments or a motion regarding the consent agenda?
A motion to approve the consent agenda. I second.
We have a motion and a second. Macy.
Trustee Kimsus Smile.
Yes.
Mayor Larson.
Yes.
Trustee Danforth.
Yes.
Trustee Corvillan.
Yes.
And Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Consent agenda is passed. We are moving right along into public comment this evening. Anyone would like to speak on any item that is not on our agenda this evening? Now is your opportunity. You know the drill. You can speak up, grab our attention, speak your name, whether you're resident or not. And then you can have up to three minutes to address the Board of Trustees. And I see a hand up right away, May Gerald.
Hi, Chris. Hi, everybody. This is Mary Gerald, Netherlands resident. I've seen the email that Kathleen sent about term limitations. And I find her argument convincing. And if the full board had been seated, I was going to ask that the board vote on whether to proceed with you, Mayor Larson, at the helm. Because of the uncertainty, we haven't really seen this complaint addressed. And I would think that out of prudence, you'd want to get this resolved. So can you offer us any? I saw the letter you sent to Kathleen, but you had no real legal basis for anything and didn't address the legal issues. So if the board could weigh in on that. I know public comment's not supposed to be interactive. But I think it's very concerning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Yeah, of course, if we have two board members who would like to address that as other business outside of the public comment period. We sorry, accidentally hit mute. I hope I didn't cut myself off. If any, two trustees have questions or comments. We have been addressing this with the town attorney and are getting advice from the town attorney. So we are very confident in our position as of this evening. So if two trustees would like to address this during other business this evening, they can bring it up then. Other public comment on non-agenda items?
Hello?
Yes.
Kathleen Chipai, 30-year resident, 18-year business owner. I'm putting on record that I dispute the validity of today's meeting being run by yourself. And I want to say that I didn't appreciate the flaccid response I got from you on my code complaint. You provided no evidence whatsoever to argue anything that I've said is being inaccurate or to argue and show any example that what you're saying is town's position is accurate. And I just think it's wrong of you to sit in on the meeting, and I want you to know that. You should be able to sit in, but you should not be running this meeting. You should not have set the agenda for this meeting since my complaint officially was filed on the January 24th. And I'm sad that the Board of Trustees did not call for an emergency meeting prior to today's board meeting. So that this could have been resolved beforehand. But I wanted on public record that I don't believe you are lawfully running this meeting today. And I find that worrisome for all residents. I find the whole situation for all residents as worrisome, troublesome, and concerning. That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else with public comment? Not seeing or hearing anyone else. We will move forward into the informational section of our meeting this evening with a ADA presentation from Ari Goodman and our own Nikki Dunn. Welcome, Ari. Welcome, Nikki.
Hi, hi. Thanks so much for having us. Appreciate you.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks for coming out with us this evening.
Oh, yeah, for sure, for sure. Yeah, we'll run through this, you know, in a good pace. Don't want to take up too much time of anybody. But if afterwards, anyone does have questions, please feel free to email me. I'll put that in the chat for later. You can always reach out to me. I work up here within the peak-to-peak area. And Nikki, anything before we get going?
No, thank you for the opportunity to be here. We appreciate this very much.
All right, great. Okay, well, Center for People with Disabilities, who am I? What do I do? Just before we get into this, I work up here in the peak-to-peak area, like I said, helping anyone who has a disability, mental, physical, cognitive, emotional, whoever wants to achieve any goal for living independently, whatever that may mean to them. It means different things for different people. I try to help them out with that. And they can meet with me one-on-one in a way where we can accomplish that. And it's a very reform of case management. We're not managing people. We're helping people be empowered. So the Center for People with Disabilities, mission of CPWD, like I said, is to provide resources, information, advocacy, assist people with disabilities, overcoming barriers. So in the mountains specifically, they know that I've been living up here for quite some time. And that it looks different trying to accomplish different goals with disabilities up here, more so than it would be down in Boulder or Metro North, North Metro Denver area. So that's kind of where I'm at up here in this. Thank you. Next slide. Okay, the ADA, the American Disability Act. So the ADA also makes it unlawful to discriminate against a person based on that person's association with a disability. So the ADA is a very important movement for the CPWD. And anybody who is working or active within an independent living center. And this makes it so people who have disabilities or different types of barriers than what we see in everyday living can be accommodated and also not discriminated against. Thank you. Next slide, please. Yeah, so the ADA definition in a little better, more concise term. What does it consider a disability? So it defines a person with a disability, a person who is a physical, mental impairment that sustainably limits one or more major life activities. So for anybody, that could be transportation. It could be accessing your apartment that's on a level-two floor or level-three. It can be getting groceries and knowing how to money manage. It also includes people who have a record of such an impairment, even if they do not currently have a disability. Meaning if that is to develop, that is included in the ADA. That it's in the works of being there. And includes also individuals who do not have a disability but are regarded as having a disability. What does that really mean? So this is a tricky one. So people who consider themselves to have one, but maybe something that's not considered in the DSM-V, something that's not diagnosable. For example, somebody might see having OCD as a disability, right? Or having bipolar disorder. So even though that might be in the DSM-V and people don't see it even as a physical disability, it is one that would be considered and regarded. So that is kind of the encompassing of the American Disability Act and how it's effective. Next slide, please. So who has one? Do you know anybody, right? So 61 million adults in the US live with one. And again, not every disability is visible, so please keep that in mind. 26%, that's one in four adults in the US have some type of one. It's especially common in groups that are of older adults, women, and minorities. Two in five adults aged 65 years and older have one. One in four women. And two in five non-Hispanic, American Indian, Native Alaskan have a disability. And for this, I want you to keep in mind what our population is in Netherlands. That's going to be coming into play here, especially for the two in five adults aged 65 years and older. So think of who you know in town and maybe even their age, and if they might have a disability that's regarded here. Thank you. Next slide. So what do I do? Little bit more into that. So you'll see me. I work five days a week and then some because I live up here. So I do a lot of peer support groups in Netherlands. I used to hold them at the library after socks and sandwiches for the transient and homeless population up here. I did that when Hanson was still at the Netherlands Presbyterian Church for people to have people who are with disability, support people who have disability to exchange information, resources, support. And we would meet for an hour and be able to do that. And we still do that. We just do it now online virtually. INRs, information referrals. I like to think of myself as a nexus. I'm a piece of a computer that is meant to connect one thing to another, and I'm just the facilitator in between. If somebody doesn't know what's available for housing or resources, food assistance, having home modifications, I can help that person find out what that would be later on. Systems advocacy for ADA-approved in surrounding area, meaning if somebody feels discriminated or is not being accommodated reasonably to be able to get to a business such as a ramp for physical structures, if they are needing working elevators, if somebody feels that there is not being something up to code for the ADA, we can help assist. SSDI and SSI, people applying for benefits. I've gotten this one more than I'd like to admit for COVID times. Helping people apply for benefits is a very lengthy strategic process that needs a lot of attention and detail. And people who have to apply to this maybe have never applied for benefits before. Also, that they might just need that sounding board and that backboard to lift them and say, you're doing great. Maybe you need a few more documents, and how about you let me know how that goes? And so we try to assist people in the step-by-step process of being self-sufficient and living independently up here if it comes to benefits. Yeah, other things that I help with are things like assisted technology, Alexa's. Those can be used for 911 calls if people don't have either, you know, life alerts or the life alerts aren't working and they need something verbally to help assist them because they are visually impaired or blind or they cannot get out of bed. We try to use technology that's on the market, quick, readily available and easy. We even have funding to help through the Audio Information Network to fund for that. So people aren't even paying out of pocket most time. Side railings, wheelchair ramps, grab bars. I help people find home modifications that would be funded and granted through the state. And then also a lot of mental health referrals. I'm a big, big advocate for mental health and what it does for disability. And you can have more than one and XYZ and then some more. And so figuring out what there is in this region, but also knowing that we're a small town, what isn't? And how I can help you get what you need up here while serving your mental health for living independently as well. So I help with that, too. And that's what I do up here. That's kind of a little bit of a touch of what it is. I know it's a lot to hear verbally, but if you ever need more information, shoot me an email, no problem. Thank you. Next slide. And how to contact us? So here are all of our, this is our stuff, our bread and butter. There's our phone number for the Boulder office, which is our flagship. Our website is all up to date with every single thing you could know possibly about us. We have a Boulder location, a Longmont office as well, a North Metro office, and then satellite locations in Broomfield, Westminster, and of course, me. And I work from home, so I'll meet you at the library, a cafe, whatever, you know, a ski slope, whatever you're doing, just call me. Thank you. Next slide. And I think this is where Nikki kicks it off. Go after Nikki. Thank you, everyone.
Hi, everyone. I'm Nikki Dunn. For those of you who haven't met me, I'm the Netherlands Town of Netherlands Parks Manager for Public Works here. I'm going to talk to you a little bit about what Netherlands has accomplished over these last years in order to try and upgrade our own ADA compliance. It really started with our addition of sidewalks to the town. You'll see sidewalks again on our next slide because the sidewalks, although they were a good addition, we constantly are having to try and deal with snow. CDOT, when CDOT comes through and overlays asphalt, then we have to stay on top of them, making sure that they're making sure our crosswalks stay correct and visible and those kinds of things. So our sidewalks and crosswalks can be kind of a challenge up here. Although they are nice wide sidewalks and they are, the paved sidewalks are really, really quite nice for a wheelchair to come down as long as those intersections. And, you know, the challenges that we deal with with snow and sand and those kinds of things. In 2017, we got the GOCO grant for Chappeta Park to improve accessibility. So we improved the access to Chappeta. One of the things that I was noticing is groups of people coming up from the city or even from in town weren't able to make it from the parking lot to the pavilion. And that actually really broke my heart. People shouldn't come to a public playground and not have access. So we got them access to Chappeta with the hard crusher fine trails. And then we also tore out that old kids' fishing dock that was really falling apart and put in the new kids' fishing dock with a bump down so a wheelchair can roll right up there and fish straight off the dock. And we did take note of that this past summer when Larry Johns and the Colorado Parks and Wildlife put on a Fishing is Fun event at Chappeta. We did have a couple of kids show up with walking assistance devices like wheelchairs and just walkers. And they were able to fish directly off the dock and from around those trails around the kids' fishing pond. It was really neat to see all those smiles. Nothing warms my heart more than to know that everyone has access to a program. Those hard-packed trails go all along the south side of the creek and up to the pedestrian bridge. The pedestrian bridge does present quite a, quite a problem, especially on the north side of the pedestrian bridge. We have that, the slope that's really unfriendly to people walking, let alone a chair or other assisted devices. Last year, 2020, we started the Visitor Center Bathroom Remodels. And actually, that started out in 2018. I removed the stalls from the inside of those bathrooms. And then in 2020, we made the bathrooms touch-free and put in sinks where a wheelchair could roll directly. Under the sink, everything in those bathrooms is ADA compliant. They are very nice and I keep them very tidy. If you ever get a chance, poke your head in there, and if you don't need to go potty, just go look at them. They are really something to see, and I'm quite proud of them. From the moment that you walk up to them, there is nothing that you really have to touch. And it is 100% ADA-compliant bathrooms. Well, one of the other things that we did was Town Hall used to have those railroad ties around the front yard. We took those railroad ties out and created some crusher fine trails that gets people to the building. And then getting into the building, we have that old historical building with narrow doorways. And the building itself really isn't ADA-compliant. However, Town Hall staff is very accommodating and is willing to meet people at the community center or wherever in order to get them access to whatever it is that they need. Our administrative assistant, who is now the, he's gotten a promotion. Peter has upgraded our website. Our website is a nice ADA-accessible website. And another nice thing that we did on that website a few years ago was we gave them access to me. So that if someone needs to ask a question about ADA, they can reach out to me. And then I can try and connect them with whoever that is. And a lot of times that would be Ari. In other cases, maybe the Rocky Mountain Center for People with Disability. The Community Center program is quite accessible. We got access to the Community Center for people in chairs and other things like that with the elevator. But also, we just did something very, very simple and got a ramp that we were able to remove and put up if needed so that people have access to the multipurpose room upstairs and other areas. Tunston Village is a great example of one of our buildings here in town that is ADA-compliant. If you go into those apartments in there, there are no, nothing's too high, nothing's too low. It's all just right. And the kitchens are quite nice and accessible. They're very, very friendly. If you ever have a chance, ask for a tour. The hallways are nice and wide. They have elevators. It's very, very nice, nice and bright. That's the other thing is sometimes people aren't necessarily blind, but they might have a visual impairment. And so Tunston Village is a nice, bright example of what ADA compliance looks like. And so is our library. And that's another place where Town Hall staff can meet residents if needed to go over documentation or whatever that would look like. Thanks, Miranda. Next slide. So again, you'll see sidewalks here in our areas that where we need improvement. We, we're working on it. We are, and that's the important thing, is that we keep on working. It's not just sidewalks. It's all of our access points around town. Making sure that the rumble strips are pointing in the right direction was a challenge when CDOT came through and did the overlay through the roundabout. They actually put those little rumble strips there, pointing in a direction that would have led a blind person into the middle of the roundabout. So I kept my eye on it, made them move it, and they weren't really happy about that, but it's safety first. So they moved them. And that's a lot of times what ADA is, is just kind of chasing people and making sure that we're doing it right. Just keeping your eyes on it, detail-oriented a lot of times. Areas of improvement, I put playground equipment in here. It is a goal of mine at Chappeta Park to see a piece of accessible equipment. That could be a swing. It could be a piece of exercise equipment for seniors or others as well. Because accessible, that's the thing. If it's accessible to one, it's accessible to all. And that's really important. So I would love to see a piece of playground equipment down there where I can see a kid come down in a wheelchair and he actually has something to do, not just fishing, which is important, but other things as well. The other areas of improvement is educating the community on ADA compliance opportunities. And when we say that, there is an entire demographic of people that our tiny little businesses aren't accessing by not letting those people access their buildings. Just for an example, the Rustic Moose is really a nice store, quite nice, actually. But it's so tight in there, you couldn't get a wheelchair in there and/or up and down those stairs. And consequently, they're really limiting their business by, you know, keeping those people out. So just educating them on maybe how to get them access even into the upper floor of the building. And our sidewalks down First Street, those rumbly boards that we have in front of the co-op and down through the deli, those kinds of things, yes, they look pretty and they're historic, and it's the way it's always been. Just because we have done something one way, does that mean we should do something one way? It really is limiting. And the longer we go on, the more we need to give people, all people, access to these buildings and these businesses and our town. So, you know, just educating people on what they're missing out on and what they could potentially provide to the public by giving people access. Thanks, Miranda.
Thanks, Nikki. So Miranda Fisher here, Town Administrator. I was just going to tie this up with, when really thinking about ADA, what are some solutions that we can aim towards? Nikki already started. First thing is education. We really need to educate land use applicants on ways that they can ensure their structure is ADA-compliant. Of course, when billing permits are pulled, you know, there isn't that assurance when the safety bill comes and does their inspections. But just finding ways to even enhance that that much more where it's above and beyond even just building standards and just encouraging people to access the facility that's being built. First, we're in grant funding to continue to work on sidewalks. You know, we did recently start to kind of look at revitalizing main streets. Unfortunately, it does not look like it'll work out now. But revitalizing main streets is one of many grant opportunities out there for essential businesses. So continuing to just keep our pulse on what are the funding opportunities available? When are they due? So we're hopefully doing it way in advance. I'm just making sure that we're always kind of having that pulse on what funding is out there to continue to do that sidewalk maintenance as Nikki just spoke to. Obviously, the execution of the current grants we have is key, being the Transportation Improvement Project and Safer Main Streets, both of which improve the sidewalk accessibility near and around the RTV parking ride, coming down through the Visitor Center parking lot. Those projects really need to be executed in the next little over a year. And so continuing to maintain momentum and focus on ensuring that those are completed and truly do serve that purpose of making sure that there is accessibility. It also comes down to educating the businesses. Again, Nikki noted quite a bit on this, but you know, there's the fiscal and the social and the community side of this. By creating access, you obviously could have the opportunity to create more revenue. You know, more people can come in. There's just that social desire to want to ensure equity. And just also in educating, seeing how we could tie businesses to funding opportunities. Are there private loans or grants available to a business that would help them with their ADA compliance? And using our Clerk's Department to pass that information on. Nikki is passionate, as noted, about the Playground Equipment Grant, and so we'll keep looking for that. There was an opportunity that presented itself last year, but it was due, I think, a day or two after we heard about it. So wasn't quite the right time, but we are ready to move forward with that. As Nikki noted, she has been promoted to our Parks Manager position, so congratulations to her. And one of her roles is to develop recreational programming that's focused around ADA, ensuring that we're doing more of those kids' fishing and things that people of all abilities can participate in. And then the last thing is as we head into securing and executing a comprehensive plan update, just making sure that ADA is highlighted through it, but that's something as a community that we're passionate about, and we want to make active strides toward. So that's the end of our presentation. Thank you so much. Are there any questions or comments?
First, Ari, Nikki, thank you so much. Also, Nikki, congratulations. Yeah, thanks for the presentation. You know, this is clearly something that's important, you know, for this board, for hopefully future boards and for our entire town. I think it might have been Nikki who said, we want to make sure that people, anyone, any of our residents who come to any part of our town, any of our town facilities. I think it was, it might've been Nikki who said, yeah, we want to make sure that peop- anyone, any of our residents who come to any part of our town, any of our town facilities can do things there, uh, that can access it. And I know this board has spent a lot of time discussing this kind of thing. I know it was just recently, we talked about the revitalizing main gre- main streets grant to try and improve ADA accessibility on First Street. And it's, it's unfortunate, I think, uh, that we allowed one majority property owner to have whittled away at that and sort of killed that for another year. But um, that is what it is, and I hope we will continue to pursue those projects and improve the sidewalks on First Street so that, you know, we can actually use them and not just ADA. I mean, certainly able-bodied people have enough trouble walking those streets, particularly in the winter times, and those sidewalks, particularly on the north side that have just become blighted and fallen into disrepair. Um, so hopefully we can continue to work on that. Um, other comments or questions from the Board of Trustees? Lindsay?
Thank you so much for that presentation. I really appreciate it. And um, yeah, I really hope that um, this board and future boards can focus on, on making sure that our town is a little more ADA accessible. Um, accessible for, for people, for even able-bodied people. Like as Chris said, it's really tough. I mean, I, I certainly struggle in our downtown. Um, I mean, to weave in and out of cars sometimes and uh, but uh, you know, I'm glad that we're highlighting this and making sure that this is something that stays at the forefront. So, thank you.
Tanya?
Yeah, uh, thank you guys for the presentation, for everything you do. It sounds like um great organization that's helping people. And um, just, I mean, the most obvious disabilities are those that where people have a hard time walking. Um, and I just don't, don't know what we can do as a town to make First Street and all, like, a little bit less dangerous, because even for regular people right now, anywhere you park, it's on a sheet of ice and doesn't matter how accessible the store is. I park, you know, on the ride, town ride away next to Salto or something and it's like ten, two feet to just get out of my car to the sidewalk, but it's a sheet of ice. And I think if we could direct the um, plowing company, you know, groups to go at night when there's nobody parked and really, really clear it, because BNF does a really good job of, I mean, there, there's ice there, but they really do try to get there at night and get it, get it as good as they can so that when the sun does come out, it's, it's like clearer and better. And then it snows again, then you're back where you started. But feels like what we've got going on is just a cumulative layer of ice that is never gonna go away until April. Um, and there is no, I, and I think it's a little late now for this year, but I just think in the future, uh, the idea of being more proactive on those First Street parking spots, anywhere near a business, along the highway. Um, which I believe that some of those are town parking spots. Um, I don't know. I just really concerned about it. I, I, we are not a friendly town for people with walking disabilities. We're in the summer, we're doing better. I love those improvements at Chippeta Park. Bathrooms, we're definitely going the right way and I really appreciate everybody's hard work on that. But um, we just need to try a little harder, I think. That's what I think.
Thanks, Tanya. Julian?
Uh, yeah, I want to thank you for that presentation. And of course, we can look at the presentation and say, yeah, we already knew that. But this put it in the forefront of the mind and that's important. Uh, I certainly know that when I look at some of these projects, it is an afterthought how disabled people will get around. And from now on, I'm going to resolve that it will not be an afterthought. And I, I have to tell a story. Uh, I'm looking for a job right now. I haven't filled out an application for a job for God knows how long. But I'm filling out applications for a job and I now have to declare if, or if I am disabled or not. And I look at the definition of disabled and I find that I actually, by definition, am disabled. And yet, I don't consider myself disabled, so I mark myself as not disabled. And read, reading through your presentation reminds me, and correct me if this isn't consistent with your understanding, that this is actually an aspect of diversity. Um.
Yes, Julian, absolutely. Yeah.
Different people learn differently. Different people approach problems differently. Different people perform and function in the world differently. Cookie cutter education, cookie cutter employment, cookie cutter physical expectations. They greatly limit our world and they limit our options in the world. And so this is one aspect of something that's very important for us to keep in mind. Not only for people who believe they are disabled, or even though they look disabled, don't believe they're disabled. It's a matter of how people, i- is a matter of people allowing, it's a matter of society allowing people to do what they do best and affording as many options to all of those people, no matter their limitations or capabilities. So I, I, this was, this was a very enlightening presentation and I greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Julian. Eric?
Yeah, I agree with what everyone said. I won't go back over First Street. Um, but this has been a, a big part of uh, how I think we're trying to steer the conversation, especially on the Parks Rec and Open Space Advisory Board. Uh, you know, you, it seems obvious uh, that uh, parks and recreation go together and that recreation is this thing that we do that involves fast mountain bikes and skateboards and, and, and then that kind of thing. But um, you know, these public spaces are commons. There are shared spaces, there are social spaces, there are community resources and there are community assets and they belong to all of us. And uh, if they're not designed universally, that is to say, if they're not designed uh, for whatever our imagination might hold of someone who might want access to that space, might be able to, might uh, have difficulty in the way that we're, we're designing it, then it's not really commons anymore and it becomes a restricted space. And it's no longer a shared space and no longer a community space. And we lose uh, that uh societal um, kind of necessity for that kind of uh genuinely shared resource. So I hope that uh, as Julian just said, that we can frame every conversation in this way, and that does not mean uh, limiting ourselves. In fact, it means expanding what's possible for our parks, for our sidewalks, for our town, for our society in general. So I hope that we maintain that kind of philosophy and that kind of attitude moving forward and I'm confident that we will. And my question um, for Ari in particular is whether or not um, I, your center and, and yourself are people who consult, for instance, on uh, projects that we might be developing, grants that we might be writing when it comes to ADA accessibility and whether or not we could bring you on uh, maybe to like a Parks Advisory Board meeting when we're discussing uh, you know, large projects that um, we might not be best placed uh, with our expertise to know whether or not it's ADA accessible or what, whether there are things that we haven't considered.
Yeah, um, Eric, thanks so much for that question. Um, and also nice to meet you. I haven't met you yet. Hi, nice to meet you. Um, yes, I'm one of those people who's a jack of all trades, but a master of none. And Center for Independent Living is very good at that. SILLS are within all the states of the US or most of them, and they're actually not as common um, that we would like them to be, but it's all about that kind of input and helping. Uh, so yes, I would be more than excited to and be ecstatic to help out in that way. Um, you know, just to, just to clarify, since my hand was up, if it's okay, Chris, if I go on ahead real quick. Thanks. Got the nod and the thumb of approval. Great. Um, so for me, it's really interesting and very reassuring to know that you guys had these many questions, comments and concerns. I didn't get this last time we did a presentation. To hear that you're really absorbing it and interested also gives me a lot of hope. Um, I've been living up here for almost five years only and only working for CPWD for about three years now. And um, it's really hard when the two places I can recommend that are ADA approved as building structures are Tunston Village and the library. And the only reason I can say that right now is because I was trying to have a meeting up here to introduce Nederland to the rest of CPWD as Boulder, as Denver, as all this. I wanted my supervisor to come up here and see what I do as a person. And the only place we could go physically was the library. Because that, she's a, she's somebody who uses a wheelchair, an electronic wheelchair and needs a certain amount of parking space with her van to be able to um, get her chair out. And I can't ask her to park at New Moon. The actual designated spots for handicap parking, disability parking are cut off by these cement blockades with nowhere for my supervisor to come see what I do. Right next to Town Hall, she can't get into Town Hall, right? That's heartbreaking because I am so proud of my town and love where I live so passionately. But it has to be a Boulder County, very new building established to invite her in. Hubned was another one also. Hubned is completely ADA accessible, which is wonderful. Um, but yes, to be able to do what you're saying, Eric, is something that I'm very passionate about. And I, and you guys, I mean, especially for those of you who know who I am, um, I'm not going anywhere, right? Like, this is a passion thing and Nikki isn't going anywhere. And we're, we tried and Miranda helped us and she isn't going anywhere. And so I want to just invite this kind of loving approach that if you guys give us that inch, we're gonna run with it for a mile. So if you can just trust us with that, like you are right now, Eric, by inviting me, we want to give results. So yes, please put me on that. Um, I hope I did, wasn't too long-winded on my soapbox and I hope you all enjoy just being able to reach out and work with me. I love to meet all of you in person and um, yeah, thank you so much for that question. Please add me. Thank you.
Again, Ari, Nikki, thank you so much. Awesome presentation and really looked, you know, well, I'm only here for a couple more months, but uh, I will continue to work for, work with you, even if I'm not sitting in this seat. And I uh, know you guys are gonna do great things for this town. So, thank you so much.
And if I could just quickly just add, tack on to what Ari just said. Sorry, uh, Mayor.
No, please.
I don't, don't mean to have the last word, but um, there is uh, the, like, we often think of these things, I think, in silos. I like ADA accessibility is different than uh, addressing climate change. And really, these things are deeply connected, right? I mean, if we want uh, to stop using motorized vehicles, we need to have a walkable town. If we build a town that is ADA accessible, we also build a town that is environmentally friendly.
I love the way your brain works. We're gonna get along, Mr. Eric. We're gonna get along, you and I.
But we do have that resol- that we're gonna, we have it as an action item coming up, a climate emergency declaration, you know? And these things I think are deeply connected and we can be thinking about these things in, in conjunction with each other.
All right. Again, thank you guys. And uh, yeah, look forward to hearing the next steps. Moving right along, Miranda, Town Marshal interviews.
It's time. We made it. So if those of you who remember, we did posts for the Town Marshal um, back in September, but we're finally ready to do interviews. So I just wanted to inform the board and the public of what's about to happen. Um, tomorrow, we're having the first interview with the Board of Trustees that is open to the public. As we did include the WebEx information here, starting at seven o'clock. Our two final candidates are Jennifer Fine Levin, who currently serves as the Sergeant for Netherlands Police Department, and Patrick Fitzgibbons, who is a retired um, former commander out of the Louisville Police Department. Um, two great candidates. We've included their resume and cover letter here for you to review. Um, but are inviting the public to participate in two weeks. The first is this meeting tomorrow. Again, it is for the Board of Trustees, but people can listen in to hear the questions and answers. But then on Friday, February fourth, from four to five thirty, we're gonna do a community meet and greet. And would encourage people to come to the community, meet Sergeant Fine Levin if you haven't already, come talk with Patrick Fitzgibbons. And similar to the Town Administrator, we'd love your feedback to email me and let me know who you're recommending for the role so that the Board of Trustees can consider that during a special meeting that they'll have next Tuesday, February eighth. And so I think I put the flyer in here, Peter Kasich, who is now our Administrative Support Manager. And he put this together for us and pushed it out on different social media channels. So just really invite everyone from the community to join us for this huge decision. Losing Larry after twenty years is, is gonna be tough, but I do think of these candidates and we do have someone who can step in after him. So just quick and brief questions.
Trustees have questions from, from Miranda about this? Just throwing it open to the floor here, if anyone chimes in. Since we'll all be back here to see, this time tomorrow night, doing it again.
And the session will be recorded, so if anyone from the public does miss it, um, we'll have it uploaded on YouTube on Thursday. Uh, so keep an eye out. Peter does typically post it on the website or social media that that is available, um, so people can watch it afterwards.
I think I have uh, just a quick question. Um, is it possible to get the feedback of the officers currently on our force and, and find out what their opinions are, um, since obviously they're the ones that are gonna have to interact with our, the candidates? Um, I think it'd be very valuable to know what they thought.
Actually, as a part of the background check process, they did provide some of that insight. Um, and so there are a series of documents that will be released to the Board of Trustees that are not considered public documents. Um, that you'll have in a private format to consider for this decision.
Perfect. All right. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Look forward to tomorrow night and then hopefully seeing members of the public there as well. Moving ahead into action items. Taber ballot language for the Netherlands Community Center Tax Extension. Miranda?
Yeah, but we also have Dalton Kelly here from Butler Snow, so I'll just quickly introduce this. Yeah, before you sign the resolution with the ballot language, the ballot language, as a reminder, was amended at the last uh, meeting. So this is just coming before you for approval. And is what we would add to the actual ballot itself, but Dalton, is there anything else you want to add for this?
Um, nope, that, that pretty much covers it. This is the question as was approved last time. Uh, or the language that the board wanted to see as it was amended. And then the resolution just sets forth calling the election and setting the uh, ballot question in the form that you see in the um, in the resolution. And uh, appointing the town clerk as the designated election official. Um, other than that, and it, setting forth that it'll be a mail ballot election in accordance with um, the Uniform Election Code and the Municipal Election Act. So that's pretty much the, the highlights of the resolution. If you have any pointed questions, let me know. But I'll turn it over.
All right. Thank you, Dalton. Yeah, I see the addition of the language we talked about our last meeting, so thank you for adding that in there. Trustees, questions or comments before we take public comment on this? We'll begin with Eric.
It looks uh, like what we discussed last time around and I have no comments or questions.
All right. Julian?
No comments. All looks good.
Tanya?
Uh, it looks good. Thank you.
And Lindsay?
Looks good to me.
All right, uh, let's public, this is uh, action item, so we're gonna open this up to the public. Any member of the public would like to comment on the taber language that you see before you in this resolution? Now would be your opportunity, as usual, three minutes. Identify yourself and I saw a hand pop up there from Dawn Baumholver.
Good evening. So um, I am here just to ask the Board of Trustees for your assistance if you agree that the community center should continue to receive this uh, tax money to just do what you can within your circles and asking the public for that as well. Because the community center will be very dependent on this money. We're doing our best to try to um, regain our earned income revenue stream, which we uh, lost a great deal of during the uh, shutdown in 2020 and are still struggling to get back to where we need to be for that to support ourselves. This money would support the operations, things like when we need re- large-scale repairs, roof repairs and such. It's what has paid off the bond and then goes into the fund balance. So it would be designated specifically for the community center. The large items, of course, would always go before the board. But I could definitely use some help in um, when I read that taber language, I'm like, what does that mean? And then you get to the actual proposal and it, you know, the actual resolution and it's, you know, much more clear. But um, I- But um, I'm just soliciting support for the Community Center. If you think it's an asset to the community and something valuable for the town of Nederland. I'm asking y'all to let people know that what they need, what all that language means is please vote yes if you want your Community Center to continue to benefit y'all. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Dawn. Certainly get you on the uh, trying to interpret legalese. That is just a way to get lost in the words. I just want to make a reminder, I see we have several call-in users. If you are a call-in user and would like to speak on this item or any other this evening, hit star six to unmute yourself.
Hello?
Yes, please.
Kathleen Chipai, 30-year East Mag resident, 18-year business owner. I want to second what um, Dawn just said. And uh, people need to be clear that you're in support of the Community Center uh, when voting on this. And I know legally uh, the BOT is limited to what they are allowed to um, they're not allowed to be pushing these things um, on the voters, I don't believe. So I, I, I do think that the Town Administrator should definitely um, have some language that lets people know if they're in support of the Community Center, they want to vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. Anyone else? Not seeing or hearing anyone else, I will bring this back to board, bring it back to the board. See if anyone has a motion to make regarding Resolution 20 dash 20, 2022 dash oh eight.
Motion to approve Resolution 2022 dash oh eight.
A second? I hear a second there. All right. Motion in a second. Macy, if you would please call the vote.
Trustee Danforth?
Yes.
Trustee Kums Esma?
Yes.
Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
And Trustee Corvallin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Is so passed and this will be on the ballot in April. Thank you, Dalton. Thank you for helping us with that language. Thank you, Miranda, for pulling it together. Moving right along. Ah, this is one of the, yeah, this has always been one of the fun ones. We get to actually draw names out of a hat. But in this virtual world in which we now inhabit, we get to do this in a virtual manner. Drawing of the lots for the Election 22, Miranda.
Yes, although it's going to be fine because it's a wheel.
It is.
But before I do that, I just want to uh, mention that we have our list of candidates here. So for Mayor, we have Julian Taylor. Um, we did not have any other nomination petitions or affidavit overriding candidates. So Julian will run unopposed. I mean, therefore it will be listed just his name. For trustee candidates, we have Karen Blakemore, Tanya Corvallin, Tom Owl, Riley McAllister and David Sykes. So what we're going to do tonight in the Wheel of Names is determine what order in which they will fall on the ballot. Mayor Larson, did you want to do public comment after I'm guessing the Wheel of Names?
I was going to say, let's, let's do the wheel first and then we'll take public comment because it is action item, but uh, yeah.
So verify you can see this. Can everyone see the Wheel of Names?
Oh, good. We get to watch it.
I know we get to watch it. So it's actually pretty fun. Um, so I did a test here. So let me clear this. Okay. So as you can see, we have all four candidates, excuse me, five candidates listed on the wheel. I will spin the wheel and then on the results tab here is how they will be listed. So we'll just go ahead and get started. Wish you could hear. You can't hear the noise unfortunately.
I was going to say, you muted. The sounds were part of the best part of this, the cheering and the fireworks that go off.
Look, you get fireworks. So the first name on the ballot will be Karen Blakemore. At least get the fireworks. And just pretend like you can hear it spinning. It like takes forever to get those names set up. Riley McAllister will be the second name. Tom Owl will be the third. We'll get these last two going. So fourth will be Tanya Corvallin and then last will be David Sykes. I think it's going to make me spin in order to get David in. But I didn't make the thing, but.
It looks like David, it looks like David, you know, is a, a recording artist. Now it says name on the LP spinning around on the turntable.
I'm going to take a quick photo so I have it. So that is our order here. Karen, Riley, Tom, Tanya and David. That's how it will appear on the ballot. There were no affidavits for writing candidates for trustee either. So those are who people will be able to vote for.
Awesome.
Questions?
Thanks, Miranda. I just want to say, I mean, obviously I know Tanya and Julian, you guys are here because of the meeting, but Karen, Tom, Riley, David, I see all the four of you are also on. Thank you so much. Thank you for stepping up, putting yourself out there, volunteering for this town. It's obviously a labor of love for all of us who are, are currently on the board. I've been doing this for a while and it can't really, I can't, can't express the appreciation I have for all six of you for stepping up and being willing to take this on uh, for the good of our community. Thank you so much. But this is an action item. I will throw this open to public comments. So if anyone would like to speak, now would be your chance. Catch our attention. Three minutes. You know the drill.
A quick question. Miranda, where did you find that?
I just Googled it. I was like, because it was sort of this Wheel of Fortune thing and it was perfect. It's not as fun as the impersonating hat thing, but it worked.
I've got a, I've got a meeting tomorrow, some middle like.
All right. I actually have a question for Miranda as we bring this back to the board. Do we know sort of timeline? When is, how are we doing the debate this year for the trustees?
So under the Fair Campaign Practices Act, town cannot host the so we need to have a third party. I was the part on here, so I'll tell her now. I was going to reach out to Barb Hart and just see if the Mount Air wants to do it or some other entity. And we could of course provide the space, but unlike last year, we can't actually organize it. Um, I would encourage trustees and mayoral candidates to have your own meet and greet. You can push that out. On social media or however you want to encourage people to come meet you wherever. Um, but I will see what we can arrange with a third party for a debate.
2020 was the last thing before the curtain went down, right?
Yeah.
Yep. All right. Well, thank you, Miranda. And to all six of you, best of luck. And again, the most sincerest thanks ever. Yeah. Can't wait to, you know, talk to all of you. I know there's, I know most of you, but if a couple of you don't, I'm looking forward to meeting you.
So I would like to apologize. I signed up for this on the assumption that there would be better candidates. And if someone competent would be also be running. And that didn't happen. And that is something that I'm hoping the town can change. I'm hoping we can make this job appealing to someone who is innovative and wants to help the town. And it looks like you're going to be stuck with me and I feel very badly about that. But in two years, hopefully, um, a slate of competent candidates for mayor would be wondrous. We'll see what we can do about that.
Thank you, Julian. All right. Third action item of this evening, our Climate Emergency Declaration. And I believe we have members, well, members are our SAB and our newly minted Sustainability Coordinator, Erica and Melody. Oh, I thought I said Erica on here. Maybe I didn't.
I think it looks like we just have Melody tonight.
I think so. I thought I saw her name here, but I was wrong.
I'm hoping we have, yep, there she is.
All right. Can you guys hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, perfect. Yeah. Um, so Julian and Eric were so kind as to provide um, some feedback just about some wording um, about how the resolution went. Um, and then they developed kind of more resolute uh, action items at the end. The Sustainability Advisory Board looked at their edits. Uh, we totally approved of them, had no other suggestions. So that draft is just before you guys tonight. Um, and I'll leave it there.
Thank you, Melody. And, and Eric and Julian, thank you so much for, for fleshing that out a little. I really appreciate the, you know, eight or so bullet points of actual, of actions that we can resolve to take in support of a climate emergency declaration.
That was all Eric.
Eric, do you have some further comments in that case?
But, but trustee Taylor did not delete them, so. I think I used to blame as well. So um, there, there's just one thing that I would like to comment on and I think it got lost. I, I did check my own edit and I did fix it, but it didn't make it into this fix. In the first whereas, where it says pre-industrial levels and to pursue efforts to limit the temperature increase to 1.5 degrees C, the quotation marks before pursue are incorrect. I would just like that those to be fixed before we pass uh, such a thing. That's all I have to say.
Yeah. So when you make the most, and just, just as amended and we'll fix that before signing.
Julian, do you have any comments?
Uh, I, I I do want to say that uh, looking it over, this is entirely satisfactory. I was a little disappointed because trustee Kums Esma called out for several wherashes, the word source with a question mark. And source with a question mark really doesn't mean studies have found uh, indeed for uh, one of the wherashes, I took only five minutes to find the actual original study. It would have been way better if someone had taken the time to find the actual original study and cite that in the whereas. I'm not going to argue that we go back and go through this all over again. I'm okay with this. It's certainly better than the previous proposal that other towns are using. So our town's proposal was better than theirs. Uh, hopefully other towns will be using a proposal more like this. And hopefully other towns will actually source these because the actual original studies can be found. Nonetheless.
I'm sorry that I didn't take the time to look those up myself, but I was just hoping that someone else might.
If I wasn't looking for a job right now, I probably would have, but yeah, yeah.
Thanks, Julian. Lindsay?
Looks good to me.
Tanya?
Yeah, I think it's a great improvement. Um, and I appreciate all the work you guys did.
You're here. Before we move to a possible motion as amended, uh, this is a action item. I'd like to open this up to public comment. If anyone would like to speak on the Climate Emergency Declaration, we're looking at here this evening. Now would be your chance. Catch our attention. You'll have up to three minutes.
Hello?
Yes, floor is yours.
Bye. Eight, uh, 30-year East Mag resident, 18-year business owner. Um, I uh, I appreciate the, the fixes, but I don't think we need to pass this, especially as an emergency. And um, I think we have other emergencies on our, on our plate that need to be addressed. And another resolution again, doesn't uh, do anything to change anything. So um, good effort, but unnecessary and I'm against passing it.
Thanks for your input. Anyone else? Not hearing any. Bring this back to the board. Anyone would like to make any kind of motion regarding this resolution? Perhaps Eric?
Well, I just, I, I just uh, respond to public comment that we heard. And just to say that actually I agree um, in the sense that uh, we do need to turn these words into action. And can't just pass resolutions left and right and think that that's good enough because of course, it is not. I do think this sets out uh, kind of framework for legislative priorities that the town could have and that we could run everything that we do through that framework and ask whether or not it contributes meaningfully to uh, what we've laid out here. And I think that we should do that and we should be more systematic in our approach. So yes, uh, on one hand, I think it's very nice to pass resolutions. On the other hand, they are not action. And so yes, we do need to take uh, more meaningful action. So I just wanted to at least address that aspect of the comment.
Other comments? Or a motion?
Could I make a suggestion?
Yes.
Miranda, when we're about to make the motion, could you please scroll to the number? Cause I forget the number. Or to the suggested wording for the motion? That would be extremely helpful in these meetings. Just a thought.
That's what I was just doing. I was trying to scroll to find.
Yeah, see, I, I have it over here, but I'd be looking over here and talking. I'd rather not. So I move that we pass Resolution 2022 dash oh seven. A resolution of the Board of Trustees of the Town of Nederland declaring a climate emergency.
Trustee Taylor, will you add um, with the amendment of correcting?
With just amendments regarding quotations in the first whereas.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second on the table. Macy?
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Trustee Danforth?
Yes.
Trustee Kums Esma?
Yes.
Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Trustee Corvallin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion is so passed, resolution is so enacted. Thank you, everyone. Uh, thank you, Melody, for bringing it before us this evening. Thank you, Eric and Julian for working on the language, particularly Eric, I guess, uh, and for catching those renegade quotes. Moving along, next action item is the parking in the CBD. And I believe Miranda is going to introduce it with possible additions.
Yes, I will take it over and then turn it to trustee Danforth if she wants to add anything. But um, finished the trustee Danforth created these surveys, the business survey and the citizen survey. She did so with input from the DDA. So really tonight, we're ready to release these. We'd like your approval from the board to do so. If you do approve that, what we'll do is we'll send them out tomorrow. We are asking that people complete the surveys by Friday, February 25th. Now the plan is to go to all boards and commissions throughout the month of February to get their feedback and also encourage them to fill it out. I think tonight we're just looking for your approval to release. And trustee Danforth, is there anything else you want to add?
Yeah, I think if, you know, the board can look with a critical eye on some of the wording on some of the questions, I, I know that there was some concerns about uh, one of my questions is the leading question, I guess, about surface parking lots. Is there a desire to see fewer surface parking lots and more buildings? I think you know, I was hoping to try to elicit a response about the desire for a walkable, dense, you know, kind of shopping street is kind of what I was going for to see if that's something that the town desires. It's kind of a, certainly a more central business district that's not structured by lots of surface parking lots. So if you guys want to look at that question specifically, um, as that had been brought up by the DDA, I'd appreciate any feedback or anybody who's, who's better at uh, wording questions to uh, help me out there.
I, I do kind of agree that it is a leading question and you even kind of answer that it, you were hoping to get the response that people want a more walkable street or town. So I would definitely love to see what some of our really great writers on this board come up with as a way to phrase that question better.
So this was introduced into the plan a little late and I didn't have time to look at it, I know. Is there a process where we can convert this to an information item and then bring it back? Would that be useful? Then Then a couple of us could actually go in and directly assist in the rewording. It, I'm just wondering about that. I mean, this is presented here for the first time. And as I say, I know I didn't have time to go over it with a fine tooth comb. I'm just, so I'm just curious about procedure. Otherwise, you know, we could, we could edit that one right here just by talking it through a little bit, but.
I think if there's a desire for more time, we absolutely can and we would like always just adjust the deadlines and do a combination of kind of feedback in February and early March. And so I absolutely think, I know, sounds like trustee Danforth really appreciate that feedback. So if there was a desire to do so, we wouldn't decide not to take action and just postpone this to the next board meeting on the 15th.
Yeah, I think. I think better way, sorry.
Go ahead.
I was saying, one better way to phrase that question might be something along the lines of, I am happy with the ratio of surface parking lots to buildings in the CBD. That could be less leading into a particular, you know, perceived agenda, whatever that might be. The question that I actually had a question about was the one about requiring off-street parking. And I assume that it's, I guess, it says businesses in the central business district should require off-street parking. Should that read, should be required to provide off-street parking? Is that more in line with what the question is actually asking?
Yes.
Not put it on the businesses to require, but upon basically the town to require it of businesses.
Right. That looks like the meaning.
Okay, just go slowly here for a second because I couldn't edit as we're talking.
I think it should say should be required to provide rather than should require.
Trying to find that question.
And I guess, yeah. And the other question is, are, do we want to be doing this kind of editing like this live? Or do we want to postpone this two weeks, give Lindsay a chance to collate these comments from trustees and bring this back as an action item at our meeting on, would that be the 15th?
Yeah, I think that, I want to speak for trustee Danforth, but I think it would be helpful if maybe you email the feedback to us. So to trustee Danforth, so we can make those amendments, because it would be nice also for her to then we can bring it up in real time.
Miranda, do you want you or Macy to be the focus for that? Or do you want those to go straight to trustee Danforth?
She's in control. She has the power.
I have the power.
I just want to make sure that it didn't start looking like a public meeting, but if we each send it to Lindsay, we're fine.
CC Miranda, just for continuity sake and.
Yes, I need to take it so we can help adjust as needed.
You can also submit a survey to me and, because I'm going to wipe them out, whatever responses, you know, I've gotten right now are just from testing and playing around with it. And so it'll get cleared out before we release it to the public. So if you want to submit one and there's comments under each one of those questions, you can provide your feedback directly in that, that question in that section. And then that'll show up as a spreadsheet, which then we can include in the next packet as well. So if you want to submit it that way to me, that'd be wonderful.
Great. There was one other question I had, which it's not really about specific editing. I just want to make sure I know the meaning of the question. And that was one that said, I support shared parking in the central business district. I'm just wondering what you mean by shared parking? Is that a technical term that I don't know? Is that?
So, yeah, so that was brought up. Yeah, so it was brought up by the DDA and it's in our parking code that businesses can agree to share parking that, you know, if they, if one business is open during the day and the other is open during the night, you know, that they could have some kind of agreement for shared parking. And I can link directly to that in each question. I can link to some of the areas that these are directly referencing. But I could clarify that a little more, certainly.
Parking spots that are shared between two businesses and that's, that's what, so it's like a single spot that two businesses claim as their parking spot would be shared parking. Okay. I just wanted to clarify what that was.
Getting the link is an excellent idea for trustee Danforth.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I know we're not trying to do this now, but even saying something like currently businesses are allowed to share their parking, you know, the way you described it. Do you agree that that's a good policy or something like that? So that it's not like so confusing off the bat? And so they don't have to click a link to understand it either. Just like a pre-leading sentence to kind of explaining how it currently, you know, you could give an example even like the bank allows Crosscut to use their parking at night because they aren't open.
All right. Other comments from the board? I think we, it sounded like we basically had a nod of four to let Lindsay work on this for a couple more weeks and bring this back based on comments. So any other comments or additions? Well, it is an action item and we are, we're moving ahead pretty quickly this evening. So I'm going to throw this open for public comment here as well. It'll come back obviously as an action item for further public comment at the next meeting. But if anyone who's on the meeting this evening would like to comment on what you've heard and the surveys you see before you, now would be your chance. Catch our attention and you'll have up to three minutes. Not seeing or hearing anyone? We'll come back to the board. I think that pretty much concludes the parking in the CBD survey question. We, wow, 8:15 and we are cruising along. I know. Does anyone have any other business they would like to raise with the board tonight? Any trustees?
I do.
Yeah, Tanya?
I have two things. I think there's a good segue with parking to go back to this grant, the, what was it called? The, the one that you guys decided not to continue because of a development that's possibly happening, happening.
Revitalizing main streets?
Yeah, and you know, this whole desire to be more walkable is a great desire, but we're just so not there. Like just right now when I park, it's like I said earlier, it is so sketchy just to walk from my parking spot to a spot, the business I'm going that's like 30 feet away. So to think of having satellite parking lots and people walk, considering we're covered in ice for six months of the year, I, I think it's a great, I love the idea, but I don't know if it's happening currently. But I, I would like to think like we shouldn't, we should consider our right of way along the creek and create, potentially apply for this grant using that creek and creating a really nice, it could totally be ADA pathway that's all on our right of way that connects up through the apothecary and onto the street there, because we own that land too, kind of weaving through there, I think, from looking at maps. And I'm wondering if that's something that could be brought back to someone's attention, you know, who works in that line. I don't, it's not Chris anymore, but I don't know if it's his son or who's the one that would be the lead on one of these projects. Because I think it's worth pursuing since the streets, I guess the sidewalk that is on Ron Mitchell's side is actually his property. So it is a little confusing to me because if it's right of way, why can't we develop a sidewalk anyway? And if they are going to build, let them build in respect to a sidewalk or same with the, same with the other side. All that is our right of way. We should be able to build a sidewalk. So I don't understand really why this kind of is dead in the water, when it's such an important future prospect for us is make our town more walkable. So the two things I want, one thing I wanted to say, why can't we pursue a riverwalk with this? And the second, I really don't understand why we still can't even just continue to pursue this if the sidewalk would be on town's property anyway. But I get it if it's, it would be on someone else's property. And that's my first point I wanted to bring up. So I don't know if anybody else wants to talk about it or we could talk about it at a future meeting. If somebody else wants to talk about it, we could add it to an agenda if anybody else is interested in it.
Miranda, do you want to address a couple of the things that Tanya brought up about the grant proposal?
In talking with some business owners, both on the north and south, they do have developments. They are on their property. However, oftentimes there is a need to kind of tear up our town right of way in order to, to create their entryway or their walk-in or whatever that might be, so they would get a right-of-way or excavation permit. And so it's really not appropriate to pursue grant funding for something that could end to being ripped up. While yes, it would be then replaced at the owner's expense, it's just not ideal. And in reviewing this grant with JVA, the scaled back, it makes us really not that competitive anymore. By only focusing on the south side, the purpose of the grant is to revitalize mainstream. I think it would be a hard argument to say, well, the south side is the only side that needs work, when that's not true. The south and the north side need work. And so in order to pursue this, you really need to make sure you're doing the entire downtown in and of itself. You know, again, especially because the north side needs just as much, if not more, work. And so it is highly likely we would not receive the funding. Therefore, I think it's important to assess these private developments and then go look for something else. This grant revitalizing mainstream is due on Friday. And so I can submit it, which is the south side. The south side person who was going to develop did ask that we not. The north side developer also asked that we not and the DDA was, was open to complying with their request. And I feel like kind of out of equity, we should be doing the same for the person on the south who is asking us not to do this at this time.
I get it. What about adding a riverwalk component to future grants? Is that something that I feel like that anybody else feels like is worth pursuing? I mean, the street's great, but we have all this.
ProSab has looked at this before, right, Eric?
Yes, I think that there continue to be erosion concerns along, if there's a path on either side of the river, that it kind of has an exponential effect on, on potential erosion problems. So it would need to be designed with that in mind. I know that that's what I've heard. So I, and, and you know, I'm not like out and out against it. I've heard even businesses on the south side talk about having some kind of work.
I mean, look at Estes Park or other communities.
I do think that what will be extremely enlightening in this conversation will be when we complete the Trails Master Planning Process at ProSab, because it really is kind of a connectivity project, sort of understanding all the different places where our residents kind of want to see connectivity between trails and sidewalks and, and, and other kind of pathways for transportation. So that hopefully will be completed within, you know, the next few months or so coming into the summer here. And then we'll have a real nice Trails Master Plan that will clearly articulate sort of the gaps there. And I think that debating that Riverwalk and ProSab might be the best way to start that conversation. That's at least.
That would certainly also provide a really good input or source of input from, you know, for the public, particularly those who live up and down the river, you know, around the creek to, you know, start working with ProSab on the idea of pursuing it and possible plans.
I mean, I wasn't thinking about putting it in front of someone's house. I was thinking.
Yeah, not further down, but.
Crosscut. To, you know, the apothecary.
Downtown area, yeah.
That instead of my house either.
Yeah, I think, I think that's a, I think that's a really great thing. I think of, you know, having that come before ProSab, particularly as Eric said, with the Trails Master Plan and Development is incredible. I think that's a, you know, we've talked about it for years off and on, the idea of a riverwalk. And if we can't get the critical mass going to pull it forward, I think that would be wonderful. I do, I think we, you know, I do think it's unfortunate that we continue to allow hypothetical developments to hold back our town. I mean, I, you know, let's build a sidewalk. If a development comes up in five years and tears it up, we got five years of actual ADA compliance and use out of a sidewalk. Let's not be, continue to be held hostage by these hypotheticals and trying to get moving forward. But I also understand that this, we've missed this opportunity. We've missed this deadline for Friday. I just think it's a real shame that we, as a town, allow ourselves to be held hostage like that. Tanya, you had a second?
Oh, yeah, but just a follow-up on this.
On that conversation, that's, you know, that's precisely what I was going to say, mayor, is that I think that we need to kind of develop a policy here. I think that one of the biggest problems was the speed at which that grant needed to be proposed to the BOT and then written and presented to the granting agency was, it was simply too short of a turnaround time to really have a robust debate. But we need to start thinking about what kind of policies we're going to have when, when we are faced with these sorts of co-development issues between the town and privately owned entities. And, you know, if a building permit has not been pulled, I, I find it to be very difficult to say that someone might develop there, so we shouldn't build a sidewalk. It seems absurd to me. So I think that maybe the policy in the future should be, if a permit is pulled, sure, why build a sidewalk that's going to be ripped up in two days? But if there's no permit, then as far as we're concerned, there's no development. End of story. That's how I would do it.
And it's really not on the property owner. If, what do they care? You know, they have to rip up the side. It's our loss, not theirs. So I really don't understand why I push against it. But, and I was going to ask, now that Chris is gone, he was always the one that was kind of a big guy, like looked for these grants and would bring them up to us. Who has taken on that role in public works now? Now that's kind of separated into these three different.
Yeah, it would be the responsibility of each department head. So Jen Landen for Utilities, Nikki Dunn for Parks and Emma Pell is here for Streets. It's a part of their job descriptions and the requirement to keep their pulse on funding opportunities.
Miranda, did we not also allot funds for a person who would intentionally seek out grants based upon our needs?
Yeah, when, if direction is given. So currently Jennifer Waltz is looking at grants for Big Springs Egress because that direction has been given. And so the board feels like revitalizing main streets or some sort of additional main street grant is what they want her to focus on, then yes, she'll do that research.
And we have a person to do that work. Okay, so that's, that's another important thing for us to bear in mind. We can voice ideas upfront and if we decide we're going, we want to move in that direction, we have someone tasked to search for grants. All right.
Well, I mean, how do we just have, like, I feel like that should be something she should be looking for. Do we bring this up on a future meeting then as a discussion item as to what things she should be doing this year or?
Do we actually have to be the ones to do this? Can you as town administrator sort of, are you empowered to direct the grant writer to pursue these opportunities?
Are you empowering me? I mean, I guess I'm happy to. I mean, obviously we're monitoring her invoices, so it doesn't exceed that 30,000. I feel like if the board feels comfortable that we know it's a desire of yours, I'm happy, like trustee Corvallin said, to let her know this is what we want because we.
It strikes me that, that the process perhaps can be facilitated better by improving our communication with advisory boards. Perhaps a working session with an advisory board that is specialized in something that we have discussed at some point. A working session with an advisory board like that could lead us in a position, leave us in a position to say to that advisory board, why don't you put together a longer-term plan based upon what we've discussed? And then that gives us at least a hint as to what kinds of grants to look for. And possibly we can coordinate that so that by the time that proposal gets to the BOT, we have the money synced up as well. So perhaps we can address this through working sessions as well and taking the advisory boards in closer to, to the Board of Trustees in order to help us plan a little bit better. So that might also help.
So I do have a meeting with Jennifer Waltz this week and so I'm happy to, to bring this up as a priority and she can keep her pulse on it.
Awesome. Did you have a second topic, Tanya?
Yeah, I feel like we should address all the code complaints that were brought up. Now, I personally don't want to bring this into any sort of like personal thing where, you know, we're trying to kick you out or whatever because you've been here too long. But I think we do need to clarify like the term limits. So is it, is it clear in our current code as to how many, is it consecutive years? Is it terms? What constitutes a term? Because from what I gathered from, you know, what the email we received today that two years, like my, I'm here for two years, but that's not considered a term, that four years is considered a term. And it's just a little unclear and I wonder if there's any way to clean it up so that, you know, maybe it could just be consecutive years serving town, regardless of being in the mayor or the trustee or some other way that can argue with it. And that I just feel like that's important for the future.
Yeah, clarifying language, you know, and I would certainly say right, I'm going to say right here, right now, this would be something I would suggest would be addressed by a future board. You know, I do, I wouldn't want us to be, you know, obviously doing it and even if we. And even if we were to do it this, you know, next meeting, it would not take effect for any member currently sitting on the board. It would, you know, it's for future, you know, you don't pass things about your own terms or things like that. But yeah, some kind of clarifying language, you know, making it more clear whether, you know, make it more clear about the offices of mayor versus trustee, what, like you said, terms, like you, well, I mean, like you brought up the example of your term being a two-year, but you were elected to a two-year term. Or versus the idea of being elected to a, like to do a four-year term, but only serving two years of that term. And that kind of language, uh, confusion and disambig- or ambiguity. Um, certainly I think that would be something a future board should address.
You know, like eight years, 10 years, whatever, you know, like.
Whatever.
Something that's regardless of if you're the mayor or the trustee, you know, like, and so, um, and I think that's important. So, um, I don't know if we want to just wait for the future board or start just kind of hashing it out in a future discussion item. But that's just, I feel like it, it probably does need to get addressed so that it can go to rest.
I mean, we do know that this board has clarified several ordinances that we knew were worded poorly. And if this is an ordinance where we can look it over and say, and concur that it is unclear, especially when compared against Colorado law. Then yeah, it certainly looks like something that the upcoming board could modify. It's kind of an interesting issue because that board could modify this, but it couldn't apply to their terms. One of those old things. But fixing the ordinance, if it is confusing to people in general, and that's important, if it's confusing to people in general, and we can't come to a general agreement among rational people, what it means, then yeah, absolutely. We need to just fix that ordinance. Yep. I'm, I'm agreeing with you, but we couldn't do that right now.
I'll say I don't find it to be confusing myself.
I don't either.
And I find it to be quite clear. And I'm quite confident that we are operating fully in compliance with, with state law in that regard. Um, I do think that, uh, perhaps explicitly designating, uh, the office of mayor and the office of trustee as separate offices in our, uh, own code would clarify pretty much everything. And then for the rest of it, just rely on state statute. I don't see any need to further legislate on term limitations when it seemed to be completely reasonable at the state level already. Um, and simply clarifying those offices might be just the way to go, uh, the most elegant solution. Um, though I do think that the offices are quite clearly separate as the mayor has different roles and responsibilities and is indeed elected entirely separately from the board of trustees, even though the mayor does also serve on the board of trustees. That to me does not, uh, present any sort of inherent conflict or confusion. I think that that is quite clear and I just would like that to be on the record. I think that confusion might be being created, uh, rather than confusion actually being generally existent among residents of the town on this. So that is.
Is it said, because the whole like, is it said somewhere like full term versus like a half a term? Or, you know, like, is that in the?
It, it's in state law. Like, so it's not in our town.
Full term is in there.
So it, it specifies that it's no more than three consecutive two-year terms or no more than two, four-year terms. Uh, those are the term limitations as set by state law in any single held office. And, uh, to, to, the, the, the only gray area I can possibly see in our own town code on this matter is whether or not the mayor is a separate office from board of trustee. I don't think that it is, uh, confusing that in fact it is a separate office. However, if it would alleviate some of this confusion out there, uh, to, to just simply declare it as a separate office very clearly in town code. And I think we just rely on state statute for the rest. That would be my preferred way of approaching this.
Yeah, we should do that.
And I agree.
I know attorney Madam was prepared to start to draft that ordinance, but as Mayor Larson noted, we'd like to do so with the new board. And so, um, I'll just confirm with her that, um, one of the, the first prime May actions of the new board would be to take a look at that.
Yeah, let the new kids do it.
Exactly.
It's going to be you doing it.
Just reduce all of our term.
Oh my God.
Can we, can we do that? One two-year term is the limit.
Yes. That's enough.
Then we can.
We can go, we can go back to the, we can go back to the ancient, ancient Athenian thing where they just draw lots on who's serving on the board. And you, if you're, you got, got pulled out of the hat, it's a two-year term.
I'm wholly in favor.
Yeah, that would be great.
That actually is the fairest way to form a government, but most people don't like it. On the other hand, that is the origin of our word idiot. Because those people who were drawn from the hat and chose not to serve in public office were referred to as the idiota, the little one. And, uh, the, we, we bring that forward, but I use the word idiot in political terms because it technically means from the Greek, you were called to public office, but chosen said to serve a private agenda. So I have used that word for certain politicians.
Indeed. The law was the preferred method of the anarchist philosopher Murray Bookchin, um, before he died in Vermont.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Okay. Well, that was all I wanted to talk about myself. So I don't know if anybody else has other business or.
Thanks, Tanya.
I appreciate you bringing up those, those topics, Tanya. Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
Any further or if anyone would like to make an early motion this evening?
May I say that a short meeting that starts with a, a floor show like ours did is a good meeting.
It is a very good journey.
It ends with the definition of idiot.
I was going to say, and it ends with a linguistics lesson. We have a motion to adjourn. Do we have a, do we have a second?
Yes.
All right, Macy.
Mayor Larson.
Yes.
Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
Trustee Forrest.
Yes.
Trustee Corvallin.
Yes.
And trustee Kumsesmile.
Yes.
Eight thirty-six PM and we are adjourned. Everyone enjoy the snowstorm if it's actually coming in tonight and stay warm.
It was a fun meeting and don't forget the James Joyce, uh, the presentation at the library tomorrow. I don't think it's going to snow enough to make that hard to do, but just so everybody knows, James Joyce tomorrow at the library.
Great. Well, thanks, everybody. Have a good night.
Bye, everyone.
Thank you, Mayor.